We reconvene the meeting for the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, October 20, 2021, and we will start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, all. This evening, Mrs. Bailey has her parent hat on. Her daughter is a senior at Chopticon, and tonight is senior night for the volleyball team. And so, Mrs. Bailey sends her regrets, but she is happily in the bleachers at Chopticon watching, hopefully, the Chopticon girls win their game.
Yes.
So, good luck to Chopticon volleyball.
Go Braves!
Yep, absolutely. And we will start by, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda as written.
Do you have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Board reports. Judy, we will start with you.
All right. Good morning, everyone. I want to start this meeting off with some sports news. I know Chairwoman Bailey always represents Chopticon at these meetings, but I wanted to highlight Leonardtown tonight, especially since she's actually at her daughter's senior night right now. But about two weeks ago, Leonardtown beat Chopticon 20 to nothing during Chopticon's football senior night. Yeah, Raiders! Sadly, we were defeated by Great Mills the following week, 14 to 26. Though I always enjoy the football games, especially because of the friendly county rivalry and the wonderful marching band performance at halftime.
Yes.
It's okay. You win some, you lose some. It's all right. We have definitely more football games in our features.
Yes.
All right. But in more smab news, last Thursday, I had my first high school superintendent student leadership advisory council meeting. It was hosted at Dr. James A. Forrest Tech Center, and students from all three high schools and Fairlight Academy were present. We had a diverse group of students and attendants ranging in grades, program studies, backgrounds, interests, et cetera. My focus for this school year is on reconnecting with students. As we all know, the pandemic took a toll on our students, but also on their ability to learn, their ability to form meaningful relationships with others, such as their peers and teachers. But I wanted to take this opportunity to understand what was going on inside of their high schools. I'm happy to say that many of our students have pride in being a student of their high school, but also of SMCPS. While many of their concerns centered around overcrowding issues in the hallways and general school climate, these students believe that their voice could be heard and that their concerns could be addressed. Dr. Smith and Dr. Marr were very receptive of their concerns and did a fantastic job at opening the day, though Dr. Smith's jokes didn't quite land this time. He did talk about fixed and growth mindsets. I'm very proud that fixed and growth mindsets are built into the SMCPS third grade curriculum. It is wonderful that students are being taught positive reinforcement at such a young age in their most formative years. Again, I just wanted to highlight how prepared SMCPS students are to take a hold of their future. Many of them are eager to make a difference in their future, and my seat on this board represents their voice. Thank you.
Jim?
Earlier this month, I attended, along with other board members, the Mabe Conference. And one of the interesting things about the conference, they have a number of workshops. And one I attended that gave me the most interest was the Teaching Academy. And as we all know, it's hard to recruit and find teachers, not only in this state, but even in other states. So I guess somebody must have asked, why don't we grow our own? So we started this Teaching Academy where the high school students are kind of fast-tracked to the profession of teaching. And the students from the ninth grade, I think, up to seniors end up interning with other teachers. And it was quite interesting, because I think there's about eight, eight or nine students there, each kind of reciting their experiences. And what's interesting is almost all of them have said they're going on to college and they're going to eventually work towards getting a teaching credential. So I thought that was very, very interesting. Secondly, the Rotary Clubs of Southern Maryland sponsored an annual Easter festival. And the only thing I wanted to comment is how well it was attended. And it would all, I guess the parking lot was completely filled out both days. So I think that's a good sign that people are confident. A lot of people have their shots. And it was a very successful fundraiser for the Rotary Foundation.
So I also went to the conference. Great information. One of the talks that I got a lot out of was how COVID-19 has affected the special ed. The principal that spoke was fantastic, how they, you know, sometimes it might look like the parents are really disinterested in, you know, working with their student, but in reality, a lot of these parents are so overwhelmed. Now they are trying to work from home and have these students that might have a severe disability and trying to work with them, whether it's PT and OT and speech and their other schoolwork. So it was a very eye-opening from a different perspective. The other thing was this past week was Chopticon's Spirit Week and Homecoming. And so I was contacted by Chopticon, I guess, to find a cow. And it wasn't just like you couldn't just get any cow, but a cow that could be walked onto the football field. So I set about doing that. I did find a cow for them.
A pregnant cow.
Yeah.
A pregnant cow. So you really got, they got two cows.
Yeah, yes, yes. The cow was pregnant. So, because I'm on the Farm Bureau, so they thought they'd contact me. And I want to thank Brooke Buckler, who is a student at Margaret Brent, who took her time to bring her cow, her show cow, out to the pep rally. And her grandfather from Settler Farms, who went and picked her up and got the cow on and, you know, and brought her out there. From what I understand, the kiss the cow raised over $1,000.
It did.
And it was a dollar a piece. So, but it was very entertaining, had a great time. I was invited to come watch the kiss the cow since I had gotten him the cow. So, but thank you to the Bucklers and to the Settlers for that.
A lot of, a lot of students wanted to see Dr. Anthony, Brooke Anthony, kiss that cow.
Yes, yes. It was her and the principal.
And then he just, Mr. Perner just hopped in, but Ms. Anthony, Ms. Anthony did win. A lot of support for her kissing a cow.
Yep.
May I?
Oh, thank you. And Ms. Weaver's board report just epitomizes the amount of support we have in the county from our Farm Bureau. How they are, and they're always willing to help. And October 4th to the 8th was Proclaimed Maryland Homegrown School Lunch Week in the State of Maryland. And Greenview Knoll's Elementary School was the kickoff for the annual event for the State of Maryland. According to the governor's press release, he said, quote, "The program encourages Maryland schools to serve local food and lunches to show students where their food comes from and to introduce them to fresh nutritious products grown here in Maryland," unquote. Part of the Maryland Homegrown Lunch Program is the Farm to School Program. And it was my honor to attend the program with Dr. Jeff Marr and Dr. Jeff Walker. They represented Superintendent Smith, who was away at the Mabe Annual Conference in Annapolis. And it was our honor to welcome the Maryland Agriculture Secretary, Mr. Joseph Bartonfeller, and his staff members. Delegate Brown Crosby was there, too, and he read a story to the students. And the students were well-prepared for the occasion. Food and nutrition services provided the curriculum for the teachers, which included farm life, healthy eating, parts of plants, where plants grow, and what plants need to grow. Students were dressed in farm attire with plaid shirts, boots, and jeans. Thank you, parents, for getting the students dressed for the farm life theme. And this is how the program was held. There were four stations on the school lawn. Students moved from one station to the next, and they sat on bales of hay during the outdoor presentation. Station one dealt with farming and planting stations. Students talked with a farmer who presented the topic of farming, planting, and farm equipment. Actual farm equipment was towed to the school by the farmer. Station two was book station and tasting. Students heard the story, zombies don't eat vegetables. But this zombie did eat vegetables. He was different, and he got his parents to eat vegetables. Students sampled local radishes, colorful cauliflower, and broccoli. And these local vegetables came from Stoffers in Mechanicsville. Station three was called the Nutrition Station. Students heard another interesting story, and this one was called Up, Down, and Around. And it was the story of how and where food grows, whether above ground, below ground, or on vines. For example, broccoli grows up. So the students find that. Tomatoes twine around and around. And broccoli grows up, pumping vines around and around. So the students had a great time learning that, the way plants grow. Then they played the parachute game, where they each received a plush food toy, and they put it in the huge parachute. And they all lifted the large parachute up and down and made a tossed plush food salad. Station four was animals. This was the final outdoor station, which featured a cow, a calf, a rabbit, and a goat. Students were given the opportunity to touch the animal if they felt comfortable doing so. Finally, the last event was eating a homegrown meal in the cafeteria, which included baked sweet potatoes, watermelon, and other locally grown food. Many people needed to be thanked for putting on this wonderful event. First, St. Mary's County Food and Nutrition Services, Caitlin, who was the coordinator for the event, the University of Maryland Extension Office, the St. Mary's County Farm Bureau, Maryland Department of Agriculture, Secretary of Agriculture, Mr. Joseph Bartonfeller, Deagle Farm, Adrian Hill, located in Mechanicsville for the sweet potatoes, and Bean Bill for the watermelons, Greenview Knoll Schools and Staff, Parents, and Community Volunteers. I believe our students will remember this event for many years to come. They will tell their children and grandchildren about it, and we might even get a few future farmers. And the last event I'll talk about is the National Walk to School Day, which was held at Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary School on Wednesday, October 13. And the purpose of the National Walk to School Day is to encourage students to walk, bike, or roll to school. Safety is the number one priority, and over 140 students joined with their parents or another adult to walk, roll, or bike to school. And walking is considered safer than running or jogging. And walking promotes a healthy lifestyle, and students were given a gift bag for walking and biking or rolling to school. I had a fabulous time. Thanks to Mayor Burrows, who participated and has participated for many years, and Corporal Nelson in supporting students and families. A special thanks to Ms. Snyder, the IRT, who coordinated the event, and Mrs. Simmons, where both were on site to welcome walkers and families. Thanks to all the families who took part in the event. And our schools are as busy as ever, regardless of COVID, and we are finding a way to make learning fun for students and for families, and we are still moving forward in a productive way for our students. Thank you.
Thanks to all. I was not able to attend the Kiss the Cow Spirit fundraiser because I was invited to do a segment, to record a segment for Kids Place, the program for young children. I read the book, The Love Behind the Mask. As a former ICU nurse, I was asked to lend a hand in talking about the importance of hand washing, mask wearing, and taking care of them, taking care of yourself during this time especially. And I'd like to thank Lexington Park Elementary School. The principal and the nurse allowed us to be in the school clinic for me to read from there. So it was, it was a great experience, and I look forward to seeing the final cut of the show when it's all done. Thank you very much. Dr. Smith?
Would like to loop back around. So Mrs. Washington, you know, cauliflower looks like brains, right? So, you know, I guess you could maybe fool zombies. That's going to be, maybe that's what we'll do. You know, that's a good idea. And to Mr. Davis's, the Teachers Academy of Maryland, the presenters at the Maryland Association of Boards of Ed, where were those kids from?
St. Mary's County.
They were our kids. They were our kids from the James A. Forrest Career and Technology Center. They really did us proud. Melissa Chu just is doing a wonderful job. And we have the kickoff event, I think, on Thursday night, tonight, or Thursday night, tomorrow night, is at the James A. Forrest Career and Technology Center, where I think we have 16 or 17 kids that are going to be, that are going to be in classrooms doing, doing work with teachers. I'll tell you, these kids, they graduate from St. Mary's County Public Schools, ready to go right into a teacher prep program. I really think that they, you know, we're doing a wonderful job preparing the next generation of educational leaders. So, wow, you already really talked about a whole bunch of the stuff. I got a picture there with the, with Dr. Anthony kissing that cow. She'd never kissed a cow before, so, you know, I was told there's a, you know, Perner was an old, Principal Perner was an old hand.
He just walked up.
He just grabbed that cow on top of the head, gave it a big old smooch. But it was really a great, it was a great week. Great Mills had an awesome Spirit Week as well, and a wonderful homecoming. Chopticon had a wonderful Spirit Week and a, and a homecoming. If you remember back to Saturday, you know, it's outdoors, beautiful morning, very warm, cool weather coming in in the afternoon, rain, and I have to tell you, they just, they all did a wonderful job, all the adults who are helping to facilitate all of that. The administrative team and Ms. Ashley Gallo, who is just Miss Chopticon, she's involved in all of, they really, they really just did an incredible job and a beautiful, beautiful night. These kids are absolutely making memories. When they look back on this really weird time, they're going to remember their, the events that they've had. And there's a couple of other things that are there. We have the, if you're wearing orange today, Orange Day for Unity Day. George Washington Carver had Hispanic Heritage Night, incredible. And of course, recognizing our fabulous bus drivers. And in fact, we're going to be recognizing bus drivers this evening. So that's all great. New teacher classroom visits. I said I was going to go out and spend some time with all of our new teachers. I was able to between Mabe and this, 13 classroom visits, fantastic, incredible kids doing really fun stuff in the classrooms. I've been able to do math, do some reading language arts. I was paw today in the play, The Goose That Laid the Golden Egg. Unfortunately, I killed the goose because paw wasn't that thoughtful about stuff, so it was great. It's really, it's really quite wonderful. And seeing all of our teachers out there and our kids engaged in learning, it really is, it kind of reinforces all the fun stuff that's going on. And if you are not following us on Twitter, you need to follow us on Twitter. Again, it's the Feel Good Feed of all the things that are going right in the world. So you, so we started with Judy talking a little bit about Slack, and our incredible Mary Ann Williams and production crew put together a video. And what better way to kind of capture, there's also a great video on the farm, the festival as well, that's been posted and is out, so if you want to seek that out as well. But this is for Slack.
Hi, guys. It's Sophia from Chopticon. And this video best view is about a special committee that the school system has. It's called the Superintendent Student Leadership Advisory Committee, or SLAC. The students of SLAC get together once every quarter to exchange ideas with the superintendent about what can be better improved in our school system and what things are coming to the school system that students should know about.
SLAC exists as a space for these kids to have an unfettered voice with one another and with me to help shape decisions that the school system makes. It really is a great opportunity for these kids to see leadership in action and develop their own leadership, both at the quarterly meetings and then back at the schools when they're working with their principals at those sites.
Get to come here, talk about the school, what schools need to work on, and like what's, what they're improving in and what they're not improving in, and what we could improve in.
It's a good feeling to be able to, as a student, to be able to make changes or at least contribute to it.
It's the bringing communication to our higher-ups and just making sure they know what we think and some of our concerns.
They are actually trying to listen to what we, what we have to say, and we do want to make things better. So it's better to just tell somebody what needs to be done or like issues you're having, rather than keep it to yourself and it never gets solved.
It really does help, like you and your fellow students to get your ideas out there and your cross and like what you want to see changed and like what do you want to see like in your school, like moving forward.
If you want something changed, you gotta go. This is where it gets done.
If you like watching this video, make sure to review our past episodes on our YouTube channel. And if you have any other school-related issues or ideas that you wish to discuss with other people, then be sure to contact your local Slack representative at your school.
For more tips and tricks on how to be your best U, be sure to like, comment, and subscribe, and we'll see you in the next one.
We could watch it again. Yeah, and again, and again, and again, get the views up. It's, you know, it's, we've been doing that, Dr. Marr. We started that, what, first year? This is, this is-
I want to say eight years ago.
This is, yeah, this is year, this is year eight. And so we've seen, we've, kids that, some of them, they've been with us the full four years, some kids jump in in the end. It really is, it's a, it's a really great tool to have a communication between what's going on, what's really going on in the school and what we think is going on and what we need to have going on. We're looking forward to next week. We are going to be visited by the state superintendent, and it is our intention to bring Mr. Chahdri to each one of our high schools so that we can do a follow-up session with all of our Slack leaders, talk a little bit about what we discussed, where we are, what our concerns are with the state superintendent. So that's really, you know, that's, that's way up here, you know? So good stuff. Just a, as we, every time we said we'd bring this forward, back when we were, we had the local decision-making for mask mandates, we said we'd bring back this data. We're still going to bring back this data every two weeks when we come back for the board meeting. We are seeing a very positive trend. For the last two weeks, we have seen declines, pretty substantial declines, from the incredibly high 641 cases in one particular week. So we are trending in the right direction. And what's very hopeful is we're doing that even while we're fully functioning in our schools and having all of our pep rallies and all of our events. We're not taking, we're not, we're not moving away from having activities with students, and yet still, we see a decline. Our data is posted in real time, again, right from our homepage. Go to Health and Safety, Health and Safety, you'll see a link for the COVID data. The COVID data will give you not only the Maryland data, but also our local data and our local data in real time for every single one of our schools. As they're reported to us from, from the Health Department, from parents or from students themselves, we add them to the totals list. And again, we see great trend. We went from 169 the third week of school to 155, to 106, to 88, to 66. And so far this week, I pulled down the data right before we came out here, and it's 12. So I think that that's really, really positive news. And, and I got this data from the Health Department earlier this week, specifically focusing on our 12 to 17-year-olds to see how many of them have made the decision, along with their parents, to be vaccinated. And we see the vaccination rates for our high school kids particularly, about, about 45, 50%, a little less with our younger, younger students, all the way down to 12. 12 is the, is the least amount of kids, but almost one in three students has been vaccinated since they've been eligible to be vaccinated. And that's really hopeful data. And the more those numbers go up, the more the other numbers come down. So I do believe that we will see in the next several weeks approval for emergency youth authorization for students, for children, five through 11. And we will be partnering with the Health Department, as we've partnered with the Health Department all the way through this, to make sure that we provide parents who wish to have their children vaccinated every opportunity to do so, breaking down any barrier that may be in the way. And so I am very much encouraged. I think our data is going to continue to track in the right way. And the one thing that Dr. Brewster has emphasized, and we all agree, is the more we have people vaccinated, especially children vaccinated, going into Thanksgiving, when we all gather together with some of our more vulnerable populations, all the way through to winter break. So if they, if we do have authorization in the next several weeks, kids would not only be able to get their first and second doses, but then also have that time to build up that immunity so they could go to winter break feeling quite confident that they've done everything they can to protect themselves and others around them. So that's pretty much where we are. We're at the end. We are October 20. We've only got two days left this week, then we have next week, and that will end the first quarter of St. Mary's County Public Schools 2021-2022 school year. We are almost 25% done. I will tell you that time is passing quickly. So with that, I conclude my remarks. I'm just thankful to be here with all of you and look forward to the next several days. Should be good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is National School Bus Safety Week, October 18th through the 22nd. Mr. Thompson?
All right. Please step it up a bit. So before I begin, I want to bring our special guest up here with me to join me. We have Mr. Dave Lehman, Ms. Tori Hall, and Ms. Chantella Somerville. You guys want to stand over here, three of our great bus drivers. And I'll tell you a little bit more about their background in a second. So the third week of October is always recognized as National School Bus Safety Week. This year's theme is Be Safe, Know the Danger Zone. And this is the national poster that's out there, you know, about the 12 feet around the bus and keeping away from the bus and being careful when you're at the bus stops. Maryland Center for School Safety, an emphasis on school bus safety, an example tweet they put out as students and school buses are back on the road. Do your part keeping children safe. Stop for the stop bar. Another thing they put out was about stopping where cars stop for school buses when they're stopped at the red lights. Also, on the third week of October, at the same time as National School Bus Safety Week, we here in St. Mary's County recognize it as National, as School Bus Driver and School Bus Attendant Appreciation Week. This is a group of our bus drivers up here from pre-COVID, without their masks on, very happy, not knowing what's coming. Ms. Somerville's up there in this picture. I believe this is at Leonardtown Middle School. Sneed's Hardware, this year gave, all, gave us about 300 bags of goodies to give out to all of our bus drivers and bus attendants, which is a great, they did that randomly, just called, said, you know, we really want to give a thank you to all of our bus drivers here. And so they brought them by, and we delivered them out. So here's a picture of a couple of our bus drivers, one of our special needs buses, of giving them out. Summer bus runs, so, you know, this summer, big task, summer, after-school programs, everything. Our bus drivers did a phenomenal job handling that. So here's some pictures. Is that you, Chantella, in that picture? That looks like you. I was going to say.
You're everywhere.
Here's a picture of our start of school, Leonardtown Elementary, this year, and the kids are ready to go. kids are ready to go. Margaret Brent, some pictures. So just a few words, you know, I want to say before Dr. Smith reads a proclamation for this. So I think we learned over the last school year that, as you guys have said a thousand times, school, students struggled, many of them, both academically not being face-to-face with their teachers and socially not being around their peers in school. We learned that a lot of kids need to be in the building. The first step to successfully achieving that and having them back in our buildings each day and on time is with a dedicated group of school bus drivers and school bus attendants. Our school bus drivers and school bus attendants, they helped our students have their successful summer program and start this school year, and we're going to make it to the first quarter here in the next week. So we're there. It's been a challenge this year, as everyone knows, but each of them are doing everything they can to help safely transport our students to and from school. We cannot thank them enough. So today, Mr. Dave Lehman here, he was certified back in March of 2008. He drives bus 575 for school day's transportation. He services primary schools of Spring Ridge, Carver, and Evergreen Elementary, along with tech center routes throughout the day. And he also does some fare lead runs as well. And on the side, he's done trips for Special Olympics. I think Blessing and Fleet, you don't Blessing and Fleet, or no? Blessing and Fleet, Project Grad, various things. All day, all, all the time, he's always driving, always on the bus. I know Ms. Giles here from, well, she was last year fare lead. Did a lot of trips for her and a lot of communication with her and good times. Next, we have Ms. Tori Hall. Tori, Spring Ridge Middle School, well, let me say, first, you were certified back in 2012, currently on bus 626, Spring Ridge Middle School, Great Mills High School, Lexington Park Elementary, and the tech center. And Tori always does a fantastic job with her parents, with her kids, nothing but praise that we always get. It's always fun hearing how she's handling her bus and handling the kids, does a fantastic job. She also drives for school day's transportation. And then Ms. Somerville, Chantella Somerville, who you see in all the pictures. She was certified back in December of 2008. She drives bus 7900 currently, which is on bus 507's route for Coombs Bus Service. Her main schools are Leonardtown Middle School and Captain Walter Francis Duke. She also does a midday pre-k run for Leonardtown Elementary. And she is always willing to do anything she can to help out. She does field trips, she helps transport kids to whatever programs need to be done. You know, she never says no. She has a big heart, and she does a fantastic job for all of our kids. So we thank them so much for all that they do, and I think we have the proclamation that hopefully Mr. Smith, Dr. Smith, can come up and read.
Read. We have the proclamation, right? I don't have it up here.
It's still, is it?
Where is it?
It's by Judy.
Judy has it?
Yes.
I signed it. I made sure to sign it. Here you go.
We have, we have where it goes. This is the government's. Oh, that's the, oh, so you're gonna, am I reading that too?
You don't have to read that one. You can read that one, and we'll show that one.
All right. I'll read, I'll read, I'll read both. I'll read both. I'm in a reading mood. I'm so glad you're here today. Whereas the week of October 18th through the 22nd, 2021, has been designated as National School Bus Safety Week in the school systems across our great nation. And whereas school bus safety is an integral part of our educational program, and whereas the efforts of our school bus drivers and school bus attendants in transporting our students safely to and from school each day are recognized for their importance, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County recognizes the week of 18th, October 18th through the 22nd, 2021, as School Bus Driver and School Bus Attendant Appreciation Week in St. Mary's County Public Schools, and that all school staff and students are encouraged to recognize their school bus drivers and their school bus attendants for safely transporting St. Mary's County Public School students each and every school day. Signed the 20th October by all members of the Board of Education. I haven't signed this yet, that's why. It was working its way across. I gotta sign this stuff. Well, you can't have it then, until I sign it. Wonderful. Thank you very much. I'm gonna shake your hand, but afterwards, there's sanitizer over there, so you can always, you know, whatever. I swear, my hand's barely sanitized. But either way, I take no offense. All right. Now that's, this is the, that's the, that's the big one, from the governor, from the man. Whereas Maryland student transportation administrators and operators remain diligent and committed in their efforts to ensure the safe transportation of thousands of students on a daily basis, and their efforts are critical to the operation of schools. And whereas all school bus drivers employed and contracted by local school systems must achieve rigorous and specialized training as well as adhere to the highest standards of school bus safety. And whereas during the school year, these fleets cover millions of miles, operate in all type of weather conditions, and have an outstanding safety record despite the ever-present danger and challenges they face as they carry out their vital duties. And whereas in the turbulence of the COVID-19 pandemic, our school bus drivers have meticulously implemented new safety practices in order to protect the students onboard their vehicles. And whereas Maryland is pleased to join the nation in recognizing school bus safety in all of our 23 counties, Baltimore City and the seed school, as well as the diligence that our school bus drivers and attendants do to transport our children in person to in-person learning and keeping our Maryland students safe every day. Now therefore be it resolved that he, Lawrence J. Hogan Jr., Governor of the State of Maryland, do hereby proclaim October 18th through the 22nd, 2021, as National School Bus Safety Week in Maryland, and do commend this observance to all of our citizens. That is very awesome. How about, where did Dr. Moore go? Where did Dr. Moore go? I don't know. Wanted to get a picture with everybody. Do we do that? Do we get a picture with everybody? All right, I'm gonna have to use my own phone.
Mary or Mike?
Wonder if Dr. Montgomery's over there with her phone. Could you get your camera up and running?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Hold it. We'll move over right here, so we're just right in front of this. We'll have Mr. Thompson on one side, I'll be over on the other side.
Great reading.
There you are. All right. Want to tweet it out? Uh-oh.
Oh, we've got the big, the big camera coming.
This one's just like, "Thank you very much for the heads up, Scott. That's really great." We're good?
I'm mic.
Oh. Official. All right. Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Next item, public hearing. We have none after that public comment.
We do have a public comment.
All right, so let me reach over here into the chair's drawer for the public comment statement. The Board welcomes public comment on, input on policies and issues affecting our schools. The Board takes this time to listen and consider, but not to comment. This is not, however, the appropriate forum for negative comments or criticisms of individual staff or students. Concerns about those issues that cannot be resolved at the level closest to the situation should be directed to the superintendent. The Board sits as an appellate body in both student and employee appeals, so we cannot have prior knowledge of cases that would influence our ability to deliberate. Speakers must sign in at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker, and you may not yield your time to someone else. If you have a written statement, please give it to Mr. McCulca, our secretary, and he will distribute, make sure that it's distributed to all members of the Board. With that, sir?
Sarah Penrod.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Penrod, high school world language teacher currently serving as East Mix President. Normally, I'm joined by our ESP Vice President Elaine Deems. However, unfortunately, after doing everything that was asked of her, getting vaccinated, getting a booster shot October 1st, she's at home burning her own leave with COVID. Seventeen locals across the state of Maryland have some sort of COVID leave. And I am shocked and embarrassed that St. Mary's is not plottable. Leave for COVID is the number one concern of our members. We hear from it, from them every single day about this. We have repeatedly raised this issue for months with no movement from SMCPS regardless of multiple East Mix attempts to compromise. We have great concerns for retention and recruitment, especially in light of the current changes that are going to make it almost impossible to even recruit people outside of the state of Maryland. We're just making it harder. Most of our staff have done everything that was asked of them. They've got vaccinated, they're getting their booster shots. But what motivation do they have to maintain responsible behavior? What if one of our staff members with no leave left has mild symptoms? What motivation do they have to self-report? At a minimum, we need to follow the CDC guidelines for isolation of vaccination, vaccinated individuals, which we mostly are, but we're not providing leave for them. Providing leave keeps more people healthy by reducing the risk of people not self-reporting and then spreading the virus through school, because they can't afford to take leave without pay. It's the most responsible thing that we can do for our staff and especially our students in ensuring the uninterrupted education, highly effective education that SMCPS offers our students. Thank you for your time this evening, and I hope that everything is reconsidered.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda with the approval of minutes of October 5th, 2021, personnel, teachers, personnel, administrative, and supervisory, appointment of St. Mary's County Public Schools Ethics Panel member, and purchase of media grade face mask.
I believe it's medical grade.
Oh, sorry. Purchase of medical grade face mask.
Very good. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Action items. Mr. Watson, it has been a long road, but I am happy to say this is the contract award for the installation of artificial turf fields. Mr. Watson?
All right, we're up and running. Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much.
Good evening.
I know the bus drivers just left, but I also wanted to thank them for their service for what we do as far as athletics. Many systems across the state have struggled getting their kids to competitions, not St. Mary's. So I want to publicly thank our bus drivers as well for providing the service for not only athletics, but also fine arts and other activities after school. So thank you very much. As Ms. Allen said, it has been a long road to get to this point. And I'm before you today to request Board of Education approval to award a contract in the amount of $4,341,655.09 for the purchase and installation of one synthetic turf field at each of our SMCPS high schools, with a contingency of $371,331.91 to Field Turf USA Incorporated. Previous board presentations that I've provided over the last couple of months, just a reminder, we did award $300,000 of the 2.5 million allocated by the county commissioners to Athletic Field Consultants Incorporated for the development and design of our three turf fields. Little bit of history, as Ms. Allen said, this has been a long road, not just this year, and I won't bore you with all the details, but I wasn't here for a lot of those details, but a lot of these details have been told to me over the course of the last eight months. Since 2009 and even prior to that, 2007, when the committee was first formed, and the conversations that started before 2007, probably around 2004, when the conversations of synthetic turf fields first came about. In 2009, St. Mary's County Public Schools did an athletic facilities enhancement committee, and they performed a study where they hired an outside firm to do that. It wasn't just synthetic turf fields, it was all kinds of different upgrades to much of our facilities, including other fields and gymnasiums and things like that. All in all, that recommendation that came before the board there totaled around $20 million, with turf fields being the highest priority of that $20 million. Over the years, it was discussed, it was talked about. We had opportunities, but funding certainly was not there or went to other things. And we are in a unique position this year where funding was, was available by the St. Mary's County Commissioners and by the St. Mary's County Board of Education. So we are extremely excited. Benefits on synthetic turf field, obviously, it will enhance our athletics program and all of our extracurricular and fine arts programs. It will provide opportunities for our youth organizations to utilize turf fields, as well as the other six synthetic turf fields in the county already put in by Wreckin' Parks. It allows for a multi-sport and multi-use facility. Also, it provides a consistent playing surface, whereas a grass field doesn't necessarily offer that same, that same benefit. And obviously, you'll see here some pictures of what the fields will look like, hopefully, and you'll see that the improvements of the appearance and the overall stadium quality is going to be extremely enhanced. Some other benefits, just scheduling of games. We cancel a lot of games due to weather, and as our season limitations are very tight, it's very hard to reschedule games in an appropriate timeframe. And there, when you have student athletes playing sometimes three or four games a week in some sports, it's not necessarily the best competition or what's best for our kids. Sometimes when, in other sports such as football, where you only play once a week, weather pushes a Friday game to a Saturday or Monday, and then you have to push that Friday game to the following Saturday. And so it's just a scheduling nightmare with some of our grass fields. We've done really well over the years developing our Bermuda fields. Our athletic directors and our coaches have done a phenomenal job utilizing what we have, so I don't, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that. Our facilities are good. Our Bermuda grass fields are very nice and are very playable comparative to some of the counties and some of the schools in the other counties. What's really exciting is to be able to host some SMAC championship events. Right now, currently, North Point High School in Charles County tends to host a lot of those SMAC championship events because they have a synthetic turf field. So it's really exciting to hopefully shift some of those championship events to our three fields here in St. Mary's County. And again, I already mentioned the opportunity for Wreckin' Park, community sports, activities, tournaments, where a lot of our parents and travel teams go up to Anarondo and other schools to tournaments and they, you know, or even farther, where they have to book hotels and eat meals in restaurants, and hopefully we can start doing that here more often. Our kids and our parents can stay here, and our whole community will benefit from, from that as well. Picture of Chopticon High School, and this is in alphabetical order, no, no specific order here. I want to make that, make that clear. So each field will look identical here, obviously except for the logo and the name, but that is a mock-up of what our turf field at Chopticon High School would, would look like. Obviously, it would have Chopticon in one end zone and Braves in the other with the Chopticon logo in the center. It has a long jump and a triple jump sand pit here in the left D-zone, and on the right D-zone, it would have the high jump pit. All three schools will have that exact same setup. On the field itself, all the lines are already sewn into the surface, so the, we, our ADs, our coaches, our parents, all those who have ever lined a sports field, don't have to do that anymore, which is really, really, really exciting. So we will have all of our sports lines already on that, that surface. Here's a picture of what Great Mills obviously would look like, Great Mills in the end zone, Hornets in the other, Great Mills logo, same setup, high jump, triple jump, and then the, I'm sorry, triple jump, long jump, and high jump on the other D-zone. And last but certainly not least, Judy, Leonardtown High School, Leonardtown in the end zone, Raiders in the other, Leonardtown logo in the center, same setup, triple, high, and long jump. As far as maintenance and safety, they do provide a maintenance guide for us. You know, it talks everything from snow removal- You know, it talks everything from snow removal to if you have graduation exercises on the turf, some guidelines, materials that you can use to clean the surface, talks about what chemicals you can use on the surface, things like that. So they do provide a comprehensive maintenance plan for you, for you to follow from Field Turf Incorporated, Field Turf USA Incorporated. In addition to that, the quote and cost of our fields do include a, as you see here, a turf groomer and a turf sweeper for all three of our schools. They're toe-behind pieces of equipment that would surface brush and clean the top of the field turf or with tines kind of dig into like a half inch, quarter of an inch into the rubber material that would eventually like kind of break that up and spread those rubber pellets back out for G-Max purposes. I mentioned G-Max testing. G-Max testing is simply the rate of fall and the impact that you would have if you impacted the turf. That would be something that we would do every year. If G-Max testing does not fall between certain areas, basically what you have to do is you have to add more rubber to those areas, and we would contract that out each year, as well as annual field sanitation. Procurement and funding, obviously, this is, we've heard this information before, nothing new here. It is part of the Keystone Purchasing Network, National Contract, Field Turf USA Incorporated. Contract number is there listed for you. This is the same, of course, you've heard this before as well, same vendor that Wreckin' Park has used where there's six synthetic turf fields as well. Again, we mentioned the benefit from the county commissioners of $2.5 million. Again, 300 of that was assigned for design back in August with SMCPS fund balance presented by Ms. McCourt, $2,141,655.09. Total project, $4,641,655.09. We do have a contingency built in. It is 8% typically for a project involving soil and it's usually about 12%, but our funding was a little bit tighter, so we have an 8% contingency in with total funding, all in
I appreciate that you put 91 cents in the contingency so we'd have a reminder.
You like that?
It's good stuff.
A timeline. So our timeline, again, we are working very, very diligently towards a soon as fall season ends, doing installation in the fall and winter to be ready for spring sports this coming March 2022. So we are working really, really hard towards that. Again, all three schools will be completed simultaneously. Obviously, someone's going to start like maybe a day or an hour before someone else, and someone's probably going to finish one day sooner or two days sooner, but they're all being done at the same time. And recommendation that the Board of Education approve this agenda item as presented. Entertain any questions you may have. Thank you very much.
Dr. Smith shared this quote with me a while back, and I really internalized it, but it's, it goes something along the lines of, "A society is great when old men plant trees whose shade they will never sit under." And I'm a graduating senior. By March 1st, 2022, I will only have three more months of high school left. So I won't quite have the chance to savor these fields, but I am more than elated to have these fields be installed in our high schools. SMCPS is great because it really cares for the future of our students and our community and our school system. All future high schoolers will be very fortunate to have these fields. And I'm very excited to see how our sports programs and our fine art programs will grow with these fields.
Thank you, Judy. I presented this before, but I had a similar situation in high school as a senior football player. The year after I graduated, my high school put in synthetic turf fields. So I never got to play on it, but it's still there today and it looks gorgeous. So thank you very much for your comments. Appreciate it.
It's always after you leave.
It is, right? I know, I hear you.
The question I have is more about durability. I know technology's changed. I recall studying turf back in the 60s, you know, when it came out, I think it was in the Astrodome. And they had a lot of problems, if you recall, off-gassing, trace metals. I'm just curious if they made a lot of progress in the development of artificial turf over, you know, the last 50 years.
Yeah, they certainly have, Mr. Davis. I actually played on the old AstroTurf where, you know, you come off the field and you're just scraped and bleeding no matter what you do. That artificial turf no longer is used anywhere. It's all this synthetic sports turf about inch, inch and a half in length. And the rubber infield, like you don't come off with, you know, where you have to tape your whole body to even play on the field, on the surface. It's very, the surface is very giving. This technology has been around since mid to late 90s and has improved every single year. So this new surface is phenomenal, what it does. Lifecycle, as far as you mentioned, we get an eight-year warranty from the company.
How many years?
Eight-year, eight-year warranty. The fields generally last anywhere between 10 and 12 years is really the lifecycle, depending on how well or how often or how much overuse there is. That can kind of sway either way. I will tell you that North Point got about, North Point High School in Charles County got 12 years out of their first field. I think St. Mary's Reichen is going on 13 or 14 years. So if you take care of it and you don't overuse it, you're going to get the lifecycle out of it that you, and then some.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, the markings that are on the field, and maybe they didn't draw them on there, the ones that you pulled up, but what about like soccer, lacrosse, you know, like the other sports that would use it? Are those markings going to be put on the field?
They are on the field, yes, ma'am. You can't tell from the pictures, but they are on there. Boys soccer, girls soccer, both lacrosse, boys and girls lacrosse, field hockey, football, all the stadium field sports, all those lines would be in on the surface.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
We have to hire additional personnel to maintain the fields? Or would you try, would the employees that we have will be trying to take care of the field?
Yes, ma'am. The athletic directors will be charged with that. Again, part of the maintenance program that the company offers and the equipment that we have within the contract, that is all, and then that is all the equipment that they will need to care for the field. They'll also be in the contract, they are also provided with multiple very, very large bags of the rubber pellets to, you know, supplement that. A lot of times those high-traffic areas, like right around a soccer goal or lacrosse goal, a field hockey goal, where there's a lot of action, a lot of times you need to, you know, replenish some of the rubber pellets in those areas. But all that will be done by our athletic directors and coaches.
Wonderful. And also, a concern of marching band parents, I want to ensure that the marching band will have equitable access to the fields because those are the fields that they need to practice on with the lines, those are the fields that they compete on. And students are given scholarships for being in marching bands, such as University of Maryland. Some of our students have gone into the marching band there because of their experience in St. Mary's County. So I want to ensure that the marching band will have equitable access to the field. Is that true?
That's true. Our athletic directors will be charged with, you know, developing a schedule of use. Again, I just want to caution, I know when we get to our official turf, everyone's going to be very excited and let's use it, use it, use it, use it. And we just have to, we have to be very cautious of how much we use it because it does affect the lifespan. But obviously, like all of our teams are going to want to practice on there. It is a game field, it's not designed to be a practice field, but people will practice on it. Our sports teams will practice on it, our band will practice on it. They won't practice on there every day, but neither will our soccer team, and neither will our football team, or neither will our lacrosse teams. Like no one will practice on there every single day. There's going to be times where athletic directors build schedules. You'd certainly want kids to practice on there and get the feel of the field before they play or compete on that field as well. So yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Bailey shared that recently she was at Chopticon and had some in-depth conversations with the student athletes there. And they spoke about the fact that the challenge that they have faced in travel and also here in the county where they've had access to the Wreckin' Parks athletic turf fields and how different that is than coming back to school and playing on the grass field. So they're really excited that we're going to be able to move forward with this. Will you share with the board all, at least some of what you have done to kind of check with other systems, to ask questions and to understand more about this process and about these fields?
Sure. So I've worked very closely with the gentleman from Athletic Field Consultants Incorporated, who is in charge of our development and design, Jeff Kleis, and he's been, I mean, they've put in thousands of fields, so I've, he and I probably talk every day. And also, I've spoken with my counterpart in Charles County, Mr. Steve Lee, he's in charge of athletics in Charles County, Mr. Andy Shattuck at North Point, he's the athletic director there, have multiple conversations with them. We've talked a little bit about, you know, hey, if you had to do it again, what would you, what would you try to do? What would you include? What did you miss the first time? And really, it comes down to, at North Point, Mr. Shattuck, they did not put all of their sports fields lines on there. So you can actually spray paint a turf field. You have to use certain paint that comes off, but they didn't, they didn't do all of their sports, and they, he said if they had to do it again, they wished they would had. So we have that in place, which is nice. They also didn't put the name of the school and the mascot in the end zones at North Point, and he wishes that, you know, they would have done that as well. The other piece of that is, you know, having some electric on the field side inside the track to support track and field events. That's something that we're looking into. It's not part of the national contract, but it's something that we might be able to add should we have some contingency money left over that we don't have to possibly use for soil stabilization.
Thank you. That was, that was a question that I had put forward to the superintendent, Mr. Watson, that especially for track at the finish line especially, the challenge they sometimes face when the battery fails for both the camera at the finish line, but also the timers. And that can impact, you know, the outcomes significantly, and it does make for a difficult time. So if it's possible, I hope that we may be able to pursue that. And so I appreciate that you have looked into that and are continuing that conversation. You know, if we can afford it, if it happens, that's great. If not, you know, well, at least we tried. So thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? With that, do we have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education award a contract in the amount of $4,341,655.09 for the purchase and installation of one synthetic turf field at each St. Mary's County Public Schools High School and $371,331.91 for construction contingency to Field Turf USA Inc.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Watson, go spread the good word.
Oh, I will.
Bruce Anderson is like chomping at the bit.
Can't wait to talk to Mr. Anderson.
Just want to publicly, again, thank the commissioners and the school board for funding this project. It's always been a long time coming, and it's going to play dividends for all of us in the future. So thank you very, very much. I'd also be remiss if I didn't thank Art Shepherd from Wreckin' Park. He's been a confidant for me, and I've been bouncing a lot of ideas off of him, so I really appreciate his advice. He's gone through it six times now. And of course, Dr. Walker for all his advice and help and support of me during this process. So appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your efforts. I know that there are a lot of students and parents and parents of former students who are going to be thrilled.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Next item, information items, we have Virtual Academy update. I don't see Dr. Jaffers, but I do see Ms. Giles.
I brought with me Mr. Ballard.
We've got a fantastic stand-in.
His daughter's senior night tonight.
Ah. Sure is. And Mr. Ballard, I was at Park Hall Elementary School today and a student, and forgive me, I wrote his name down someplace else, but he wanted me to say hi to you. He was a former student of yours.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I'll have to, I wrote it down in my office, but he was, he was, he was very excited. He had wonderful things to say of you.
Oh, really?
Yes.
It's good that they're anonymous.
There you go.
So tonight, we're giving you an update on the Virtual Academy. We wanted to talk a little bit about what's going on and where we're at. So the first thing that we're going to do is just basically give you an overview of what our platforms are looking like. So right now, we are providing full-time online instruction for grades three through 12, so that's 10 grades that we're working with at this point. We're providing a blend of online education through Ingenuity and Schoology. So we are basically going through and using both of those platforms. It's an 80/20 blend, which basically means that 80% of the instruction is through the students. They're independent and working by themselves, and 20% is delivered through a certified teacher. We are allowing students in grades nine through 12 the opportunity to make a curated schedule, which means basically that they can attend the tech center, they can attend their homeschool, and they can do their education through the Virtual Academy. We are meeting the instructional needs of these students through different ways. Basically, they can do that live instruction at the homeschool, you know, if they can do AM sessions or PM sessions, and we're working with parents and students to attend CSM classes as well, as well as AP classes too. We are also meeting the needs of our students that are on homebound instruction, home hospital teaching, AEP, and with high roads, doing IEC. So we've got about four programs that are running at the same time as we're doing our virtual instruction. So currently, we have 337 students that are enrolled, and that's including four of our home hospital students that we are bringing on board with us. We have 138 students that are high school, 118 that are middle school, and 77 that are elementary. Currently, we have 36 AP class enrollments, and CSM is holding 11 of our kids, and we have 43 504s and IEP students. We have currently 21 full-time teachers and 14 advocate positions that we are using to fill those needs that we have. And we have one more full-time position that I am looking forward to fill, and that's Dr. Jaffers' math position. So math teacher after math.
Right now, Dr. Jaffers is teaching.
All of nine through 12.
Nine through 12, all of our upper-level math classes, so he is doing that most every day for me. So, yep. We're also piloting a Core Algebra I class. We are currently the only one in the state that is doing that through MSD. So we have an instructor that comes on every Monday and is working with our Core Algebra I students, and she also does office hours with them on Thursdays. So we are the only ones in the state that are doing that as well. So it's a really, it's a great opportunity for our kids to be able to do that too. And she's working through the platform of Canvas. So we've got a lot of different opportunities available for our kids. We also have currently 63 sections of classes going on, so that's a lot for our kids to have to work through. So one of the things that is happening is that Dr. Walker and Mr. Watson are working with us to develop a physical plant layout of making the Virtual Academy honestly a virtual place to learn for our students and for our teachers, but to make it more accessible for our teachers to teach. Right now, they are in classrooms, but they're not outfitted yet for, you know, for studio teaching. And what we have here is we are looking at making kind of like modules, studios, so to speak, for our teachers to teach in. So they would have honestly enclosures where they would have spaces between each of them so that they would be able to have like honestly miniature classrooms to be able to teach online with their students. So that's basically a mock-up of what it would actually look at like. The different scenes that you're looking at here are ones that include the tables, the desks, and it just kind of different situations that the teachers would be looking at when they're actually teaching. And then the one that's off to the right-hand side would be the ones that our Parris or basically our success coaches would be using. And that would, if you've gone down to the old Fairly Academy, the new Virtual Academy, that would be the cafeteria, so it would be lining the outside of the cafeteria. So it would just, it's kind of like, what would you call it, almost a, kind of like a cubicle type of setup.
It's like an open, it's like an open design.
Yeah, an open design platform. So the inside of that would be kind of a lounge type of area so that students that are coming in that need extra help would be able to use that inside area, so the coaches would be able to come out and meet with them as well live. We haven't proposed doing that just yet, only because we are in the middle of kind of a construction phase, and we don't have anywhere to put them just yet, so we don't want to bring them in and that.
If you're familiar with the classrooms at the, I still call it the Hennix because that's what it was when I was there. If you're familiar with those classrooms at all, they're large. Each one of those classrooms would be divided into three spaces, so three teachers would share. Each one of those classrooms would be divided into three spaces, so three teachers would share that one classroom space. And there would be walls, and from the ceiling, there would be sound dampening curtains to hang from the ceiling, so that the noise from one space into the next wouldn't interfere with the other teacher's instruction.
So these are a little bit of some of the mock-ups that we were looking at to put into the academy. Just some different designs that were being looked at. The one that's off to the right-hand side is where the lounge area would be for teachers and for students, because we're going to be making a lot of the different classroom areas into these type of module, modular spaces for the teachers. So we're trying to design this to look modern and as well as, you know, acceptable for virtual teaching. So again, this is just a little bit more. Could you go to the next sample schedule? I want you to take a look at the sample schedule that we have been sending out to the kids and the parents every day. And what this is, is a meet schedule. And basically, what we do is we send this to the parents and the kids, and it is designed to, every day, show them where they're supposed to go, what meet they're at, what time they're supposed to be at the meet, and this just connects them right to the teacher. Each student has to be at the meet. It's an attendance requirement that they're there. And like I said, it's just given to them every day, and it's a requirement as part of being, you know, accepted into the Virtual Academy that they agree to do this. So all they do is click on the link, and they go right to their classrooms. So it's all on the Google meets.
The schedule that's on the left would be an elementary schedule for grades three through five. And then the schedule on the right is for high school.
The elementaries are divided up into cohorts, so we have an AM and a PM cohort. For high school, some of our classes are larger, so some of the teachers had decided that they would do sections, where they divided up their classes into Group A and Group B to, because the amount of kids on a virtual meet sometimes is a little bit overwhelming. So they're going to do different types of times, so that way they can get the kids in and give them more individualized attention. We had launched a Virtual Academy Google site to make it easier for the parents and the students to do basically a one-stop shop. And it basically gives answers to questions such as AP testing sites. The weekly schedule is up there for students and parents, so they can go right to the bottom and click the tabs from Monday through Friday. It lists teachers and who they, what classes they teach, what their email addresses are, so they're not necessarily emailing all the time. It's a staff listing of every teacher that we have and what they're teaching, including advocate teachers. And it's links and general information, such as tips on what do you do if you don't want to show your face in the camera, because that also is a requirement as part of the Virtual Academy. We don't want black screens. We want to make sure that we're able to see whether students understand the material or not. So we have a lot of different information there that is accessible to the kids and the parents. So, questions?
Questions, Judy?
I do have a question. How receptive are these students? Have you guys, like, asked students how receptive they are to this style of learning, or gauged any, how they're feeling?
Oh, yes. A lot of the students that have applied to be a part of the Virtual Academy have done so because they have excelled at learning online. When we first launched it, they had thought that it would be like how it was when they were doing it during the pandemic. We have a different type of, I guess, schedule that they have to do. So it was a little difficult, you know, at the start for them to, you know, get acclimated to us. But right now, a lot of them are thriving. For some, it's still an adjustment, especially for our younger grades. They're not used to, you know, being so organized. They're not used to, you know, making sure that they're up on time and doing a lot of independent work, but they're getting there. So.
Thank you. And then I have one other question. Have you seen that a lot of students are taking the opportunity to do extracurriculars and sports or fine arts programs, or things like theater, marching band, orchestra, sports, other clubs?
We know, we know we've gotten a lot of questions about that. I don't know whether they're actually, whether they're actually following through with those, but I know that I've gotten a lot of questions from students in particular and parents about whether or not those things are available to the virtual students, and the answer has been yes.
All right. Thank you so much.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Well, I, I know I shared with Dr. Smith about some positive information that was, is provided to me about, you know, from some parents. I'm not sure if he, he also shared with you. You know, I, I've gotten word from some parents, you know, what a wonderful opportunity this has been, how positive, how their child's adjusting. And this is an elementary school. So they have, they are having a positive experience, and they keep saying, you know, thank you for the school system doing this.
Who's in charge of the elementary? Who's the lead on the elementary? Who's doing all of that? Who's basically your elementary teacher?
That would be me, I guess.
I was going to say, is that Mr. Ballard was the entire elementary program there for a while? Yeah, yeah.
Right, yeah. It was, but they, I had shared with Dr. Smith the positive notes that I was getting on, on the elementary school. And, and it, I would really like to come back after you get everything situated, because of, this was Dr. Walker in my place that we stopped on the first day, and it was really hard to envision what all you would be doing and how you would be doing it. So, you know, maybe after you get all settled and, you know, all the furniture in there and, and things like that, I'd really like to take a trip back and say it.
We hope you do.
Thank you.
I want to thank both of you and everyone who worked with you to make this, to put this together. COVID had many challenges, and one thing was it gave us an opportunity to look at things in a different way and to come up with new ideas of how to do things. We saw from the data, many of our students thrived on virtual learning, and they would want to continue that. And I think this is a good thing for students, because they can still participate in their high school activities and clubs. So I know it was an extraordinarily huge amount of work to get this done, to start with an empty slate and to put it together, because it's quite different than what was done during COVID. It's much better and improved. So thank you, and I agree with Ms. Weaver that when you get it rolling, I would love to come visit the program to see it, because that building has been used for multiple purposes over the years. So, and it's just another way to widen the horizons of the school system and give students opportunities in a different way to learn, because all students do not learn the same way. Some students will thrive, and they have with this, and other students will want to be at their high school and, and do that. So we have to meet the needs of the individual student, and this is one way of doing it. So thank you for all your hard work and your efforts in getting this program off the ground. Thank you.
Someone I spoke with said that they, they asked, because the building is historic, they were concerned about what we might be doing to the building. But I know that because all of this is modular, we don't, we're not interfering with the building. I know Mrs. Leono made that point in one of her presentations to us, where we okayed the purchase of the modular furniture, because we don't want to open those walls and floors and find out that there's more there that needs to be done. So that's a real positive. You know, one of the other things we've heard is from parents, why aren't we doing this for kindergarten through second grade? Would you address that for people, please? I know we've sent individual emails out, but I think for the community at large to help them understand.
I believe one of the reasons that we're not doing that is because it's not necessarily developmentally appropriate for that grade level, for kindergarten through second grade. They need to be socialized in the, or in those actual schools. We have found that sometimes it's difficult to deal with our elementary kids online, their attention spans. They're definitely like little gnats. They're all over the place. But we just feel that it is more just age-appropriate for it to start at the third grade, especially, you know, just at that age level. I have a third grader myself, and oof. I'm telling you, some of the stuff she comes home with, I'm like, oh, my lord, and you're in person. So I really believe that, you know, just for my own, you know, adification that the K through two program is much better served in the in-person environment than it is virtually.
We know that there's, we know that there's been questions about that. So it's not something that we've just left off to the side. Like, we've been looking at things and platforms and things that other areas have been doing and talking with the content supervisors about ways that we could accommodate it. And if we find a way to make that happen, then we'll certainly incorporate it into what we're already doing.
And I think the other question we get a lot is if the student has to quarantine, why can't they participate in the Virtual Academy? Would you share that as well?
That's a good question. One of the things that, one of the things that we're talking to parents about is that we're not necessarily on the same curriculum span that the students are in the homeschools. We are all in the same curriculum. However, we might be a week behind, a week ahead. And because we're focused on using Ingenuity to start with, the kids that were being quarantined at that, you know, time, we're not necessarily, again, on the same page that we were. So it's very difficult to have a student come into the program and then leave two weeks later. It's not a consistent, it's not consistent, it's not, I don't believe it's just educationally sound to have a student in there and then move them right back out. It's just too much shifting to happen for a student. We did have a lot of questions about that. Unfortunately.
Well, the other, I mean, the other part is that, is that the logistics.
Right, right.
For people being, and keep in mind, the kids, the quarantining of children isn't like you're quarantined for exactly two weeks. It's not. It's, it's whenever you, when you go back to whenever you were tested, whatever your release date is, and that's all been changing as well, and you can opt out. This is, we are doing this because COVID presented a funding opportunity to be able to do this. This, this should exist outside of COVID, and when we're done with this pandemic, this shall continue and thrive because of the, the work that has been done and the thoughtful way in which it's been put together by people from the very beginning. It's, it's very much like they're putting together a 10,000-piece puzzle of a blizzard. So it's just a whole bunch of white, you got a whole bunch of pieces, you know it's going to go together, it's going to work together, but it's, it's, it's slow and, it's slow and steady work. The, that, that conversation about my child's on quarantine has kind of gone down as we see fewer and fewer and fewer and fewer cases. And for all parents, I once again come back to, if your child is fully vaccinated, they need not quarantine, unless, of course, they are symptomatic, in which case they are sick. And if they are sick, they should be concerning themselves with getting better.
You know, I think the other piece is trying to, because some of your classes especially are on the larger side, moving kids in and out is, is also difficult for, for the teachers that you have to try to accommodate that. So, you know, we, we certainly pay attention to all the questions that come in and the answers that go out. And it's just trying to make sure people understand across the board. Thank you for bringing this forward to us. I think we will all look forward to hearing how all of these students fare throughout the year and, and take a hard look at what that looks like at the end of the school year to determine, you know, do we need to tweak or, or going forward. But thank you very much for bringing this to us today.
Thank you. We appreciate your time.
Awesome. Thanks.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, last item on the agenda, transportation contractor funding review. Back to Mr. Thompson.
All right, and hello again.
Hello.
The, as you guys are very well aware, there's been a lot of dynamics, a lot of changes going on in the school bus industry around the country, and especially here in Maryland. So we thought it'd be a good idea to bring to you guys kind of a little bit of the history of the funding formulas, how the funding for transportation works, and kind of the current status of kind of the requests from the bus contractors and where we are now with items. So we have three basic service models for transportation in the state of Maryland. We have the public-owned systems, mainly Prince George's, Montgomery, Frederick, Baltimore County, and Talbot. We have the contractor counties, which are dumb, are two bid counties, excuse me, that are contractor, Anarundon Howard. And we have the formula counties, which you can see there, Garrett Allegheny, we're part of that, Calvert-Chris Carroll. And that's their primary funding. I will tell you that two of the counties, Frederick and Talbot, were a result of kind of different IRS issues that came up a number of years ago.
When you say public-owned, that means that they, the buses, and it all falls under the school system itself?
Yes, sir. The buses, the, the bus drivers, the bus attendants, they are all employees, the bus mechanics, the bus shops. Everything is done through the school system, and they own it all.
Thank you.
A little bit of historical background. So in 1964, the state assumed full funding of student transportation. There was no local funding at all for transportation. It all came from the state. In 1972, Governor Mandel, he created a committee to recommend changes to the reimbursement formula after some different things had occurred. And so the committee came up with three primary factors. They said there should be a per-vehicle allotment, the PVA, to cover the vehicles, the hourly payment to cover the drivers' in attendance, and the per-mile maintenance rate to cover the, the maintenance and other issues that occur. In 1984, the state funded nearly 95% of all transportation costs, and the State Department had about 25 people, if I recall correctly, in their State Department that ran the transportation office. By 1998, that had been reduced down to 36% that the state funded for transportation as more and more cost increased. The state didn't increase their payments, and the locals had to pick up those items. And then in 2004, you had, with the Thornton Commission and the funding that came up, you then had the Educational Fiscal Accountability and Oversight Act, which the legislator and governor wanted to ensure that the appropriate fiscal practices were taking place as a result of the Thornton Commission, that their money is being spent correctly, as, so they thought. And so they created the OLA audits for all the school systems. And so the first OLA audit that occurred here in St. Mary's was in 2008. So basically, there's a six-year cycle. As you guys are aware, every six years, the OLA comes around to, to do their review. It was actually a one-time, and they had to renew it, and it was renewed to keep continuing doing these audits. And the OLA definitely had a major impact on the payment formulas that the school systems were using. While most of our formula systems had those three primary categories, when the OLA came and reviewed it, they had different concerns and different items they wanted to address. So many school systems kind of tangent, went in tangents and went off into different directions with how they were handling payments to contractors. Kind of the basic same structure, but a lot of differences. The OLA, they wanted, in the PVA calculations, they wanted the prime rate used. They didn't like a lot of us using a basic bank interest rate, which were the actual interest rates that the contractors were using to buy buses. They wanted the prime rate. They wanted the state and federal fuel taxes reduced from the fuel payments being made to contractors. And actually, the state fuel taxes were just recently, at that time, it was the federal exhaust tax, which had been around since the late 70s, that had always been able to be recuperated by the contractors. But they wanted the school systems not to pay contractors for those funds. Now, we and other school systems, we added an operations payment, kind of as different things changed, to kind of address some of the needs that the contractors had put forward. Because one of the arguments of the, going through this process is we had a committee at MSD, which I was a part of, to address the OLA about the PVA. And you found that the PVA was being used for a lot of things other than just the vehicle. So some of us went ahead and created this operations payment to address some of those other different items that are, were being brought up, you know, overhead items, substitute items, building items, different things that are not necessarily the vehicle itself. For us, we kind of went ahead with our time and mileage for our contractors being based upon our routing system, as opposed to a submitted manifest. And that's still, in the state, you have people that are taking submitted manifests still. You have some that are using pure GPS, and then some of us that are using the routing systems to make those determinations. So those are kind of, as things kind of went off after the OLA audits, different directions. Just as a reminder of our current setup, we have 42 bus contractors, 164 regular route buses, 29 special needs route school buses, and 55 spare school buses. Our budget process, so right now, we are kind of bringing together our whole budget and turning it in to the superintendent's cabinet, who will be reviewing items and our first initial request, that what we see for next year. And then the superintendent will then make his determination through his cabinet. then make his determination through his cabinet to come back to, you all present it, come to you all with items for public comment, and then your approval ultimately.
Jeff, if you could go back, Mr. Thompson, if you could go back. So the, the contractors as a group come together and they submit a letter of items for budget consideration. So that's kind of the way the process works. The, the bus drivers and bus attendants, they don't work for us, they work for contractors. They coordinate their needs and articulate them back to the contractors themselves. The contractors have a contractor association through which they communicate back and forth with the school system. So in September, we receive a submittal from the Bus Contractor Association with, here are the things we'd like you, have you consider moving forward in the, in the next budget cycle. And that's what follows.
Yes, sir. So when we're reviewing the contractors' considerations that they send in along with other different items, there's a lot of different factors we have to take into account. So the couple items that we first have to take into account are unavoidable cost areas. And our two big ones are always PVA and fuel. So PVA, it all depends on how many new buses are going to be, need to come in to be replaced versus how many are changing their, their payments going from their sixth year to their seventh year, how many buses are going out, and the price of buses, and then now the prime rate and how it changes. Because it went from a 5% to a 3%, which actually reduced our PVA last year. But that's what it is, you know, so, but if it goes up, but there's a lot of different discussions with that. You know, but if it goes up, then it increases the cost. A new bus today costs about $120,000. You know, a new bus in FY11 was $89,000. So you have increases in bus cost as the emissions roll out, the engines are costing more. There's only three vendors that, that you can buy buses from in the state. There's a lot of regulations, different items with that. Fuel increases, so every, for every penny in fuel, it's $5,500 in a budgeted amount. So for example, you know, just, right now, fuel's about $350. We started last year with our budget about $260, if you'll remember in the budget process. There's supplemental funds pulled into our budget to make it $3, and now fuel's $350. So there's, those funds are going to have to, you know, be accounted for next year. And who knows with the way the projections are going with fuel costs, it may be even higher. But just to go to $350 next year, we'll have to add in an additional $275,000 into our budget, you know, and if not higher, depending on where we end up with the fuel cost. So these items were increased and included in the FY22 budget that is currently in place. So in FY21, we just want to do a reminder of the hourly payments for our drivers. In FY21, we made an adjustment to the, how we do the hourly pay, went from three tiers that were based upon years of service down to just one payment. But we increased the total payment to contractors by 13%. So it was a significant amount of money that we were paying more to the contractors for their hourly payments, an hourly component. This year, that component, the hourly component, went up by 4.75%, which was equal to the amount of one step and the 1.75% that our associations received. And so that's how we got to the 4.75%, and that's what it was increased this year. Our fixed charges were changed from 25% to 26.5%, and that was after the public comment by the contractors at the, in the spring, winter, spring, and the decision by the Board of Ed to increase that up to 26.5% in the final budget. So the contractors, they submitted their request back in September. So we want to run through some of their, the numbers with where this falls out as of now, just so, so you guys are aware going forward into the budgetary process in the cycle. The maintenance rate, they've asked for an increase in maintenance rate over a lot of concerns with the emission systems, the DF, you know, diesel engines now, there's so much more requirements on them as far as the diesel particular filters and the whole setup with diesel exhaust fluid and whatnot, that it's, it's been a lot of learning for everybody, and there's been a lot of repairs to have to make, and it's not cheap. The air conditioning system, so all of our buses almost now have air conditioning, and those, especially when they're running during the summer, all summers with the buses, which we ran almost half our fleet this summer, they're going to get a lot of wear and tear. But I think they've been very beneficial. I think the students have, have liked them and the bus drivers, but they have a maintenance factor to them. Parts priced, everything's going up, as you know, inflation, everything's going up in prices these days for vehicles, for cars. You can't even get cars in with the chips and stuff out there. It's just terrible to find parts. And then the labor prices with the lack of labor, the price goes up per labor hour. So they're asking for a maintenance increase. The total there, it's about $395,000. The operations fund that we added on, they're asking for an increase there. It's about $300 a bus, which is about $57,900. They've asked for a miles per gallon change, which would be in addition to just going up to our 350, 375. That's about $180,000. They've asked for an hourly rate change increase. That's about $284,000. They would, they've asked for a increase from our minimums of five and a half hours to six-hour minimums, you know, to help recruit and retain drivers, but that's about a $207,000 cost. The excise tax reimbursement, we currently, when, when they purchase a new school bus, there's an excise tax that they have to pay as part of that purchase. And we, some counties do, we don't. They pay contractors for that amount. They've asked for us to start paying for that amount to help them all set the cost. That would be, for the new buses coming in next year, that would be about $67,000. They've asked for the paid spares because of the costs and labors and parts to maintain their spares. They've asked for that to increase. That's about $15,000. So overall, when you to, end up totaling overall the contractor group's request, it's about $1.5 million. And that's just a single line in our budget. That's a primary line, that's a single line. But you get to, you know, our buses that do the out-of-county services, all of our field trip programs, our software, everything else, there's all costs associated with that, too. So this is just a singular line in our budget that is being requested at this time. So we're going to go to finalize our first initial request to the superintendent's cabinet. It'll be reviewed and gone over and looking at different areas where we want to focus on. And then after that, the superintendent will approve and submit it to the board for their review and approval. And so are there any questions at this time?
Judy?
So for the fiscal year 2022 increases, I noticed that the rates have significant percentage increases. Are these calculated after the dollar amounts have been adjusted for inflation? I just wanted to confirm that all the money presented in the slides are like real, real dollars versus normal dollars?
I mean, they're all real dollars based upon where we are, you know, today and where the budget is. You know, those are the amount of money that would be put into it. Now, as far as inflation and how it affects your, the spending, you know, I can address that, but they are real dollars.
Okay. And then I just had a follow-up question, but I think you already answered, but I'm going to say it anyway. So are the increases in wages due to inflation, like, are, or also due to part labor shortages? So I saw that the, the wage salaries were increasing.
Yeah, I, I think there's a lot of different factors going into that. You know, school bus drivers nationwide are in high demand and short supply. You know, we've been very fortunate here in St. Mary's County that we've managed to run our routes every day and pretty much on time. We have a lot of sub-drivers that are running every day and driving. But neighboring counties, they have, you know, two dozen, several dozen buses that aren't running each day that it's left up to the parents to determine how to get their kids to school. You know, counties up the road, the bigger counties, they have 100 to 200 drivers that they're short, you know, different items. So we've been very fortunate with that. But, you know, over the last, there's been a lot more requirements and a lot more increase in demand on a CDL, Class B, school bus driver. And so that's affected it. There's been a lot of people that just aren't interested in becoming a CDL, school bus driver. So there's a lot of demand, but there's not as many applicants or trainees, you could say, coming into the field as it is. So it's, it's kind of a combination of a lot of issues going on that requires us to keep improving the rates to attract people.
Thank you so much.
No problem.
Excuse me. I bought diesel last week. I paid $350 a gallon. And I did a little calculation on how many gallons that you consume, 160 buses. You're spending hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars on fuel. I was wondering if you got economies of scale advantage where you could get bigger discounts from fuel than $350?
Well, we do, so because we're primarily contracted, and all of our contractors primarily use market retail stores, that's what we, we take each month and do a survey of 12 fuel stations, and we take the average price to determine our fuel payment amounts to the contractor. So that's, the actual amount that's paid to them is based upon what it is actually at the pump that they're actually paying. You know, to do economies of scale like you would be a public-owned system, you would have to buy in bulk and then force everyone to do that. But it's difficult with contractors. They're kind of running their own business and making their own decisions.
I, I see.
So we would have a challenge doing that. If we owned all the buses, you could do that. But I think with us using contractors, especially the numbers we have, it's difficult.
Yeah, I was thinking like the sheriff's department, you know, they, they have their own fuel, fuel stations, and I'm sure they get a better.
Well, we, we use those.
Pardon?
We, the, the school system uses those as well. That's where, that's where we fuel our vehicles as well.
Yeah, there's, but you only have about 20 vehicles, right?
Yeah, so we have about 25 school buses we own, but we do have an enormous white fleet of vehicles, the vans, the board cars, different, that all fuel, using the county fuel pumps.
Do you get any, any break on that?
Well, it's whatever the, whatever the current rate is.
Whatever the current rate is.
Yeah, the price is usually a tremendous difference in the price. I know they're, yeah, they're, they're changing vendors, I believe, here soon, which is, I think the understanding is the price is going to go up with what we're paying. But there is a discount buying in bulk and through a bid process, but, so our buses can. But I think through a contractor system, you couldn't.
Right.
You couldn't manage it.
That makes sense. Thank you. That's all.
I know at the beginning of the year, we talked that you had, I think, 11 people that were going to get their CDL license. And I was trying to find out how that was coming along, if they've gone for their test, or you're still waiting.
Yeah, we've had a couple of people, I mean, when you typically have a class of 11, you'll probably end up with maybe half, maybe a couple, you know, maybe a little more than 50% that end up finishing through the whole process. Right now, I know we've had a couple of people that have gone in and gotten their test and gotten their CDL. You know, we're just still struggling because we, we still are seeing people going out with symptoms, COVID symptoms, or testing positive, and then trying to fill in their bus. And it's, it's honestly a day-to-day, every night, I'll sit home at night for an hour trying to figure out what the next day's plan is, and the next day, trying to make sure all the buses are covered and whatnot. So it's, it's a day-to-day thing, because it seems like you get, you get one in and two go out, and it's, it's constant. But they, you know, we're trying to get them through as fast as we can. We had somebody go up today, you know, with the test. And so it's trying to do the best we can to get people on the road.
Okay. Well, that's positive, at least knowing that we're, we're slowly getting people in. Okay, thank you.
First, I want to thank the school bus drivers and the bus contractors for being there for our students, because it would be very difficult to start a school day without the buses. Some families have vehicles where they can drive their children to school if they choose, and some parents do not. So we really depend on our school bus drivers so that we can, they start our school day. And many of them, I just saw one the other day, who said she's been a school bus driver for like 30-plus years. And I congratulated her and thanked her for that. It's a difficult job, driving a bus with 60-plus kids on a bus, and you have to watch the road, and you have to kind of keep your ears open to what's going on behind you as well. And I appreciate them and thank them because they are very important to the operation of our schools. How do our contract bus drivers in pay compare with the tri-county area and with SMCPS-owned bus drivers?
Well, with our increases that we did two years ago along with the increase last year, they compare extremely well with them. They're still, around the state, the common practice is a one pay rate. Our neighboring counties still do a tier rate. Calvert was at six, a number of years ago, they're down to four tiers. But our drivers now, you know, their rates are at the top, almost equal to the top of Calvert. And Charles County, I think their top tier is a little bit higher than our rate. So our drivers are very comparable, you know, if not better than what they're doing in our neighboring counties. Now, the concern is, I think with what we're seeing and what the trend is right now, I think you're going to see the rates all over the state go, go a lot higher. You know, with, with what's going on in Anarundel and everywhere, PG, I mean, in Calvert County, it's, you're going to see the rates go pretty high. Now, compared to our board drivers, the board drivers have a big scale with the number of steps in it that they can take. And so there, the rate that the contractor drivers get is about in the middle to the higher percentage of the rate itself. I mean, the one thing to keep in mind with our board drivers is they get the benefits package, which is kind of the big, you know, the big thing out there for them, for that. But it's, it's very comparable, if not on the higher end of it.
And what, can you be a driver at 18 years old? Get your CDL at 18 years old?
Yes, now you can. Well, I think, well, actually, you have to be 21 to be a driver. You can be an attendant at 18, a bus attendant, but you have to be 21 years old to be a CDL driver, a school bus driver, anyway.
Because I asked that question because as we are also recruiting students to enroll in the teacher academy, that we might want to look at our students being bus drivers. But they can't be, get the CDL until they're 21.
No, this is, I mean, this would be a great way to partner with the College of Southern Maryland, something like that, to talk about how we, how we recruit into the field.
Right. I agree with that, yes, because they do have a program to get the CDL.
If they have, if College of Southern Maryland has contacted me, and I've had discussions with them, we, we do provide training for free for anybody that wants to come in to get their CDL.
Right.
So we will do that. The College of Southern Maryland, they're going to assist us in helping promote it to anybody coming to their programs, that, hey, these are opportunities that are just there, ready for you. They're local, sometimes they work out with your time schedule. You know, it's, it's kind of a, you know, for certain people, it works out. Start in the morning, have those hours in the morning, have those hours in the afternoon, but then you have the middle of the day to do other items, and the, you know, summers to do your other items. So it, it all depends that it's the right fit for the right person to do it. But we are working with CSM, their workforce development team, to see how we can work together to get people in.
I think that's a great idea. Thank you. I think one of the other things that works well for us is, number one, St. Mary's as the community that it is. We have a lot of, a lot of drivers who have been with us for a very long time. And the other thing that I think goes in our favor was the fact that we made the determination that we would continue to pay our contractors so that they could pay their drivers during COVID, so that, so that they stayed with us. Not all systems decided to do that, and as a result, those people found work elsewhere. And it's, it's come back to hurt them. So thank you for bringing this forward and, and for watching out for all of our students every day. So very much appreciated.
And just the last, the reason why we're bringing this before the board today is because this is what the contractors have asked of St. Mary's County Public Schools. It's going to be about one and a half million dollars more than, than what we are currently allocating, and that's before we add in other things. We want to be right up front to say we are, we absolutely champion our bus drivers and attendants and our fantastic contractors who have gotten us to where we are today. We want to maintain that fantastic relationship. And there is going to be a cost, and we are going to put that cost forward. Now, that will be a, a local carried cost, or it'll be a this-for-that cost. But we fully intend, when you see a budget that comes before you in December, January, pretty much faithfully what the contractors have asked for, you're going to find in that budget. Because the one thing we can't afford is to lose the incredibly qualified drivers, attendants, and contractors that we have in St. Mary's County Public Schools who helped us start as well as we did. So it's coming before you, so we're putting everybody on notice. I appreciate very much that we're, we're doing this through the proper channels and with the contractors bringing forth as we've traditionally done things. But there, there is going to be a, a price tag associated with what we need to do to, to keep all of our, our buses on the road every single day.
Thank you for making the case.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'd like to, just to embellish, Dr. Smith said, I had a very reliable source, it was T-Bone and Heather on the radio, and they were interviewing union members, I guess they were union members of Calvert County. And I recall they were making $24 an hour, and they were asking $29 an hour. So, plus, they were getting paid for six-and-a-half hours, and they were getting overtime, I don't know what that rate is, overtime over six-and-a-half hours. So it actually complements you, you haven't gone through that exercise yet, you know. But as Dr. Smith's saying, it looks like it's coming.
Well, I think, you know, through proper channels and done the proper way, I think we definitely need to address the, the needs of drivers and attendants and contractors, and really everybody that serves our, serves our students in St. Mary's County. And there is definitely a cost to be carried, and there's a right way to go about it, and I appreciate, I appreciate the way everybody has, has handled things so far this year, and look forward to a fantastic budget season. The very good news is that St. Mary's County is doing exceptionally well. So as we bring forth a recommendation for a budget, it's gonna, it's going to include how we, what we do to maintain the fantastic people we have working for and with our kids.
And I want to make one final comment about our bus drivers and bus contractors is that they are on call. So if something happens at the schools, they have to get there.
Oh, my goodness, yes.
No matter what, to deal with our students. I remember 9/11, how the buses had to get to the school, or if it's a bomb threat, or whatever it is going on, that the bus drivers have to get there no matter what they are doing. And that's why a lot of them are not able to get a part-time job.
Right.
Because they're always on call. When you call them, they come.
The drivers, I mean, most of them, I mean, are extremely dedicated and extremely caring of, I mean, those are their kids on, on those buses.
Exactly.
And, I mean, they, you know, they, they build a bond and a connection. I mean, they may be in, you know, one, have one teacher this year, one teacher the next year, but they'll have those kids for four, five, seven years, depending on the routes they cover. So they'll see them every year and watch them grow up, you know, the whole way. So they build that connection, and they're dedicated, they really want to be there for those kids. So I think, you know, we want to keep the communication open, we want to work with all them, we want to try to find the right path. We understand there's funding restraints that come about that we deal with each year, but we really want to try to, you know, keep it positive, stay, and, you know, keep our kids in school and stay positive and work through all this with it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have, anyone have anything else? All right, well then, the next board meeting will be, our regular meeting will be on November 3rd at 8:00 AM for executive session, 9:00 AM for open session, and with that, we are adjourned.